Good evening and welcome to the study session of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority. The City Council receives its separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call the study session meeting to order on February 11th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Rafael.
Frank Seer.
Oh, wait. Oh, Frank. Okay, we'll have Frank, right? If you could please stand.
In recognition of the one million men that sacrificed their lives for a great civil war that this country shall stand, we recognize it with the Pledge of Allegiance with our flag by saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton, present. Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney. Mike Lee, interim City Manager.
Alan Brog, Assistant City Manager.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Connie Evans, Acting Community Development Director.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Okay, thank you. Now time for public comments on matters on the agenda only, since this is a study session, so only on this item, which is, we have here tonight on the Comprehensive General Plan Update Visioning Presentation. And so, Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Four.
Okay, we'll go ahead and allow those four. Go ahead and name the first three.
Tom Jurrell, Robert Thinn, Tom Thorntzley. Thorntzley?
Yes, and it's three minutes each. And if the other two could be ready as well, that'd be great.
Tom Jurrell speaking on behalf of myself and a little bit for the Sundance Center, where I spent some time, time to time. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of staff and the public, you know, thinking on the way over, we're gonna get to do something Einstein would love to, time travel. Because when we do a general plan, we're reaching out 30, 40, 50, even 100 years. It's gonna affect things, so tonight we're going into the future. Well, beginning of the process, the long ways to be done, but it's a neat process. I served on the original General Plan Committee from 85 to about 89, two years in session, and we went dormant to wait till the other two bodies finish up and then come back and ink the document, but, so I'm a little familiar with the process here. But I, so I'm, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna be a one-agenda guy. I mean, we're doing a really good job across the board, but something this community is sorely lacking in is high-end housing. And I remember back during the boom in the 2000s, I was at a BIA meeting, and I talked to Bill Blankenship, he's a top guy there, and he said, "How's things going in Moreno Valley?" I said, "Oh, it's nice. We're getting some high-end housing there." He looked at me and said, "What are you talking about?" And I said, "Oh, we're getting houses for $400,000, $500,000, $1,000,000." And he goes, "Tom, I represent these builders, the same house, the Murieta, Temecula, Wildemar, Elsinore is $600,000, $700,000, $800,000, same box, and you're not getting it in Moreno Valley. You don't have high-end housing." I personally knew a couple, self-employed couple through a board, I was involved with. They had done pretty well. They saved their pennies, they had good credit, made a little equity. They could, this is in the late 90s, at that time they could afford and wanted to build a million-dollar home in Moreno Valley, because they were very loyal to the community. But they just didn't feel secure making the investment where, yeah, we spent a million bucks, maybe a little over, what's it gonna be worth a few years down the road? They ultimately had to move to Riverside, mainly to be in the type of neighborhood they were looking for. This is not an elitist comment, it's a way of balancing out the community. A young lady I knew well, and she grew up in East LA, and when she first got her driver's license, she said, when she first started driving, she'd drive up to Bel Air, Beverly Hills, and look at all the mansions. And she said, "That's what I want, and that's America. You know, we ought to rise up." And that, that rising tide lifts all values. I can give you many, many additional benefits, but the main thing is we've got the place, we've got the view sheds here that can really support the wonderful housing that I think is really needed, so we'll have our professionals in the community, we'll have our business leaders who will be independently wealthy and mentor our kids, contribute to our charities and our schools and shop in our stores. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, next speaker.
Robert Thinn, Tom Thorntzley, and Hee Young Kim.
Evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Robert Thinn, I'm a resident here in Moreno Valley. And I was just noticing the item that we're talking about today is Comprehensive General Plan Visioning Presentation. It's kinda hard to comment on a visiting presentation that we haven't seen yet, but if you don't mind, I'd like to make a few comments about maybe my vision for the general plan. Moreno Valley right now is blessed and has diversity of housing. We have two senior communities that have gated access. We have several, two very big homeowners associations that allow individuals who want more structured neighborhood to live there, along with the amenities that go along with those HOAs. For those people who don't want to live in an HOA, we have a vast amount of housing within the city, starting on the east side, I'm sorry, the west side, where we have urban area, or a lot of maybe two- or three-bedroom homes, single-story, two-story, where people might start out centrally located to shops, theaters, transportation. And as you move to the west, we have an area where we have larger homes, and we have an area where we have homes that are on half-acre lots. Now, there were some comments at the last, at the G-PAC meeting, I guess, about people instead of horses, or people come first, which I don't think is appropriate. I think that adds conflict. There's no reason why we should set one set of people against another. There's plenty of room in our city for both. And by the way, whoever said that should go take a look at the west side of town, or the east side of town, I'm sorry, the east side of town. Because the majority of homes out there that are on half-acre lots don't really have horses. They may have pools, they may have basketball courts, and you'll see a heck of a lot more RV gates than you will horse corrals. So I don't think we need to pit one group against another. I think there's plenty of room in our city that we can have both. Diversity is a good thing. It's good for the consumer and it's good for the business. Now, if you went into a Baskin Robbins and you went up to the counter and all they had was vanilla ice cream, and you'd probably be disappointed, unless you wanted vanilla ice cream, you'd probably take your business somewhere else. If you went in to buy a pizza and all they had was anchovy toppings, same thing. Unless you wanted anchovy toppings, you'd probably take your business somewhere else. Same thing with housing. We need to provide those who are coming into our city and those who are within our city, an opportunity to buy different types of houses. And I think this should be incorporated into our general plan.
Thank you, Mr. Thinn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next, Mr. Yeah.
Tom Thorntzley and Hee Young Kim.
Timer I can see here. It should, it should also be there, too.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I got worried several months ago when I heard we were gonna start the general plan. I'm more the pessimist about, you know, how all of you got into office and that there's too many things that get done that we don't get to hear about. But I've come to realize that your motto is to be transparent and make sure everybody sees what's going on. So it became quite obvious when two of the major donors to a lot of your campaigns got seated onto the G-PAC, and those two individuals, too, are also very large landowners or have the rights to a lot of the land that's undeveloped here in the city. So it's pretty obvious that you're transparent about who's going to possibly set the direction of the city in the future for what they want their land uses to be. My biggest concern is that Edo even told me after the last meeting how much the property he owns on the east end north of the freeway. It's quite disheartening because he's got 2,400 acres on the south side. He's got a general plan designation with the zoning designation that would allow him to do anything he wants out there in the business park category, not just the high cube warehouses. So if there's any thought that that property north of the freeway is gonna start getting converted into a business park as opposed to a lot of the rural residential or some of the business allowances that are out there, it's gonna be kind of a shame. I'd like to see that, and I've said this since his whole project began, south side of the freeway, if he wants it to be industrial, and sooner or later the litigation will be over and he'll be underway. Anything having to do with the warehouses and trucking, gas stations, all should be down in that area. Let the north side of the freeway stay the rule. As Tom mentioned, too, it's a, you know, we've got an opportunity for some high-end housing or nice homes out there. Obviously, we want to have more housing in the city. We need it, and you're gonna need to have more affordable housing, which could easily go at the transit points or near big commercial designations so that shopping and everything is close. I would behoove you to ask that they put together a map of all the vacant land and with transparency in mind, let the public know who owns what land out there so that we do see what the general plan is now and what it's gonna be with the change, and we know exactly how much of Mr. Ben Zivi's property or how much of Mr. Chen's property is gonna get a change. You're going to be upgrading their property, you're gonna be upping the value of it to being something higher than it currently is, and I think everybody should be made aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Hee Young Kim. I own the land and nation to the east area and Alessandro North area. And I found out county requesting 75 inches to 87-inch storm drain line. And I've been contacting many years with a different, many different developers. They cannot developing it in our land area. Even who own the 40 acre, who has a tentative map, 107 lot, still they cannot developing it those land. So we have to be done, change your zoning now in the inner general plan should show those R3 land should be changed to the R5 zone in order to able to developing. Also, changing zoning more high density, you could creating more job. In city Moreno Valley right now, what I calculate from census data showing one employee helping out six people right now, 1 to 6. Generally, good ideal city should have 1.27 or 3. You should get to create more job. In order to create more job, opened up the construction work. Construction work helping community job. Right now, you should have some kind of data, how many retail stores are closing out? Come in or going out? Why? How many people fore-closing? And also commuting distances. In order to creating more job, you can shorten your commuting distances. And also, changing those useful zoning at creating construction cost down, land cost down. So you should concern about for future general plan, for future city Moreno Valley people. Thank you. And I do have a, in the rich area impacting with a storm drain in line.
Your property, right? Yeah, and then, Mr. Kim, we'll have someone from the City Manager's Office just reach out to you right now and just give you contact information so we can follow up on that concern that you have. And definitely, it is very accurate to say, you know, we do need more jobs, you know, in our community. Right now, we're a bedroom community, and we do need to change that ratio of more jobs. So thank you. All right, I'm gonna close public comments there. We'll go straight to our business, which is A1 Comprehensive General Plan Update Visioning Presentation. And the way this will work is we'll have a presentation, we'll allow the presentation first, and then we'll just do one round of questioning from council, okay? And again, this is our time to, you know, what do we want to see in this, you know, as far as visioning? And then there will be a time for the public to, through the G-PAC, you know, through the meetings that they're gonna have, and those are public meetings, by the way. And then we're also gonna have town hall meetings. I believe there's gonna be one in every district as well, so the public is always, you can come to those meetings as well, and that's also another opportunity. So there's gonna be multiple opportunities, this is a long process as we update this. All right? So it's report from community development?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and council members. You'll recall that in October of last year, you approved a contract with Dyat Mbatiya to undertake work on our Comprehensive General Plan Update. Since that time, they've been conducting activities in the visioning realm, so helping to identify what we're looking for, what will guide us as we go through the planning efforts. So to that end, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to present you with the activities we've done so far. I'll let you know what they've been finding, see if you have any additional feedback, and then give you a little wrap-up as to what's coming next. With that, I will introduce Andrew Hill. He is the project manager for Dyat Mbatiya, and he will give tonight's presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. As Patty said, my name's Andrew Hill. I'm with Dyat Mbatiya and with the, for the planning and design firm that's helping the city with the general plan update. I have a quick presentation to set up the study session tonight. I wanted to quickly introduce you all to the project and the process and recap some of the outreach that we've done to date. But really, the main event is to hear from the council, get some feedback on the key components of the vision that'll guide the project going forward. Starting off with a quick snapshot of the overall process, as you can see, there's four main phases of the project, and we're in the first one now, which is the visiting phase. It's all about understanding issues and opportunities and developing that vision that sort of sets the tone for future phases. In the second phase, we'll be developing a range of different alternatives for land use and circulation, community design, based on the visioning, the output of the visioning phase. And we'll be exploring with the community these different scenarios and decision-makers, too, to evaluate the pros and cons of the different components and identify the best pieces to incorporate into a preferred plan concept. Once we have consensus around that concept, we'll move to the third phase, where the consultant team drafts the nuts and bolts of the plan and conducts environmental review. When those draft documents are on the street, then we enter the fourth and final phase, which is public hearings for adoption of the plan and certification of the EIR. And as you can see throughout the process, there's multiple opportunities for public involvement, from pop-up events around the community to community-wide surveys, community workshops, and of course, public hearings. So the project also has a couple of other important components that comply with new state law. For example, Farren Peers Transportation Consultants will be helping the city to develop standards and thresholds for vehicle miles traveled to comply with SB 743. These new thresholds have to be in place by July 1 of this year. After that point, this new law requires that for sequa purposes, VMT is used for evaluating traffic impacts and not level of service. The city will maintain and continue to monitor level of service for the purpose of roadway planning. It's just that after July 1, these new VMT standards have to be in place. So we'll be, the consultant team will be helping the city develop those as part of the process. We'll also be preparing a climate action plan that looks at strategies for reducing greenhouse gases, gas emissions citywide. And having that in place will be important for streamlining the process for subsequent projects that are consistent with the plan so that they don't have to do detailed project-by-project GHG analysis going forward. As part of this general plan update, we'll be updating the housing element to accommodate the city's share of the regional housing need. And we'll be preparing environmental justice goals and policies to incorporate into the general plan to address the needs of lower-income communities that are disproportionately affected by pollution. And so, as Patty said, we really kicked off the project in earnest late last year. We started with some stakeholder interviews, and we had our first public outreach event, which was on snow day here at the city hall area. And then in January, we've had done a number of other events around the community. Asking people about their vision for Moreno Valley in 2040. We had a G-PAC meeting in January, and we kicked off the first of two citywide surveys on February 1, and we've had 100 responses so far to that one. All of this public input has helped to shape the key components of a vision that describes what Moreno Valley will be like in 2040. The vision is meant to represent community aspirations, and it sets the tone for the subsequent phases of the project. In fact, the key components of the vision statement will inform the goals of the updated general plan. And so, really, out of the conversation with the community so far, four broad themes have emerged. And the first of these is around a dynamic economy. People really feel that, feel strongly that Moreno Valley should build on the strengths that had, the existing strengths in terms of health and educational sectors to diversify the economy and attract new jobs. There was also a lot of emphasis on creating a flexible land use framework that can facilitate job creation over time and also enhance livability in the city. A lot of talk about the need to create well-paying jobs locally to reduce the need for people to have long commutes to jobs elsewhere. And a critical component of that will be partnering with business and industry and the educational institutions here in the city to develop and implement programs for training and workforce development so that Moreno Valley residents are qualified to do the new jobs that'll be created here. And then, another important part of this, I think, is making sure that the infrastructure is in place to support job growth. The second broad theme that's emerged from the conversation so far is around creating vibrant gathering places. There's really a strong interest in having town centers that offer local residents and visitors a variety of different activities, allowing them to shop, to dine, to do business, and to have fun in a vibrant atmosphere. We heard a lot about the need to create inviting gateways at key entry points into the city from the freeways or from major roadways, and about providing a range of different sports, recreation, and cultural facilities with programming indicators to young people, families, and seniors. And through all of this, we really heard about the need to make sure that community facilities reflect the cultural diversity of this community, the design of them, and also the programming at those facilities. The third theme that's emerged from the conversation so far has to do with livable neighborhoods. It's really important to recognize that housing affordability is critical to allow people to grow up here, but also to stay here as they grow older. And equally, we heard from community members about the need to ensure that future housing is suited to the way we're gonna be living our lives in the future and our future needs, so that embraces new technologies, but also the fact that as a society, we're getting older, too. So the housing should be adapted to our future needs. Another component of the livable neighborhoods theme was really around creating more opportunities for neighbors to interact with each other on a daily basis. And so that could be done through farmers' markets and community gardens or festivals in the neighborhoods. We also heard an emphasis on emphasizing active lifestyles, fresh foods, clean air, and healthy communities. And there was a strong interest in safety, safety on the roads, safety near schools, safety in public spaces. But equally, also, people felt that important component of livable community is making sure that the roads are well-maintained and the vehicles circulate efficiently. And the fourth and final component of the vision that's come out of the conversation with the community so far has to do with a real interest in promoting local pride and sense of place. And so this could be by promoting attractive neighborhoods with design standards and, you know, drought-tolerant landscaping to really make the community attractive and give people a stronger sense of pride. Really, one of the themes that we heard consistently from people was about making Moreno Valley a model community where people choose to live, work, and play. There was an emphasis also on creating activities for youth and for families, places and opportunities for people to meet, so they develop those bonds and feel more attached to the community. And also, there were some suggestions about opportunities to partner with church groups and other community groups that deliver service, community services, and particularly that address the needs of homeless people. So all of that input has informed these key components of the vision statement. And what we'd like to hear from you all tonight is your feedback on these key components. And particularly, we'd like to hear from you, are the key elements of the vision accurately captured in the key components that I presented here tonight? Or would you recommend any additions or adjustments to the vision? And before I turn it over to questions and comments, just a quick snapshot of some of the activities that are coming up on the general plan. As I mentioned, on February 1, we released the first community-wide survey. That's open through till the end of the month. And we'll be releasing an existing conditions report in early March, and that's ahead of a series of community workshops, five in total, one in each district and one at a citywide location. We'll be having a G-PAC meeting in March, and then we'll move into the development of the land use and circulation alternatives. Here's a look at those five community workshops with the tentative dates and locations. And as I mentioned, the citywide survey is up, and so we would certainly appreciate the help of council in getting the word out and helping to drive participation at the workshops and in the survey as well. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. You did a great job. You were very concise and clear, so I appreciate that. And I think your presentation provided a great overview of really the visioning. And so we're not, and just to let the council know as well, my colleagues here, we're not trying to get into the weeds here, you know, this is more of just the visioning part. You know, what do we want to see, you know, as far as this? And then, as we keep going and we get more input from the public and all of that, then we'll, and the G-PAC and all that, we'll get more into more of those details. But I think you captured pretty much, for the most part, a lot of the parts. I know that you had the opportunity to meet with us as well. I would say for me, as the citywide mayor, you know, one of the biggest things for me is just making sure that we're a destination city, and I think you captured that, you know, with a brand, you know, and that was the fourth component, you know, and identity. You know, we have the M, we have, you know, part of Lake Paris, which is obviously the state, but, you know, still, we can maybe use those things to really, you know, build our brand. I think that's really important. Modern, innovative city. We're always thinking of outside ideas, you know, and a lot of different things, you know, to help students and people. I also like the dynamic economy, how you touched upon that. The town centers as well. Livability, I've heard that a lot from residents, you know, making sure that we have livable neighborhoods, so I think that was great there. One thing that I would add, that I didn't see too much, and again, I don't want to get too much in what type of university or what it is, but maybe like a university or some kind of post-secondary, you know, trying to attract that. And again, this is more of a general plan visioning, but that's something I would see, you know, because we're a modern city, innovative, you know, and in order to have those components, we should have some kind of university here. So I know we have a satellite of Cal Baptist here, you know, but it's really small. But, you know, whether it's Cal Baptist or another university, but just something, you know, that's here. I think that would be really important. And then I also, like you mentioned in the first part, I think it was in, as far as the dynamic economy, you know, flexible land use, making sure that we, you know, with flexible land use, that's kinda nice because that'll actually position us as a city for economic development. Because now companies will know that, you know, hey, you know, we can go, you know, to Moreno Valley and, you know, do a business there and not have to do all of these, you know, rezoning and all of this process. So I think that's a real important thing. That will help with economic development and bring more jobs. And so I've always been, you know, a mayor for jobs and growth and opportunity, and I'll still continue to be, and I think that's going in the right direction. So thank you. Okay, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor. And um, yeah, for the most part, I definitely agree with basically all of the uh, feedback that was given from the community. From uh, everyone who has uh, responded to the surveys at all of our community events and online. Definitely agree with uh, most of it, if not all of it. Uh, so I'll just spend a few minutes here going through, um, I wanna kinda run through the different elements of a general plan update, uh, starting with land use. Um, so, you know, moving forward, right now, we have a lot of development. Uh, moving forward, we're gonna have less and less available land to actually develop. Um, so, just definitely, like was already said, being very flexible, being able to adapt. And with the land that we currently do have, making sure that we're as efficient as possible. So, even though we do have a substantial amount of land compared to a lot of cities west, we need to be, uh, I think, thinking higher density. Thinking of going as vertical as we can, uh, instead of just trying to build out horizontally and then um, limiting ourselves in the future. Um, so I think we definitely need to think uh, about going more vertical instead of continuing horizontally. Moving forward, I think that would be wiser. Uh, mixed-use developments, definitely, um, our town center. Uh, I think next week or the week after, we have um, some bids, uh, hopefully will be coming in and we can move forward with that. So, um, you know, having a town center, having a central location for the city is essential moving forward, if we're really trying to be a world-class city. Um, and also, uh, just a couple of examples, like I've lived in Austin, Texas, I've been to San Antonio. Uh, having some kind of like water features, I know we have the lake and it's a little bit off, uh, it's technically not the city. But um, if we can incorporate something like uh, more lakes or more water features, similar to downtown San Antonio. They built their downtown around a river, and it's absolutely amazing. Um, so if we can try to think about those kinds of things, in particular with our town center and the surrounding properties. Cause around the town center, around the city's fifty-seven acres, we still have a lot of private property that I'm hoping we can bring the owners to the table. And we can all kinda have a similar vision and build out something much larger than just our fifty-seven acres. Um, if we're really trying to be a world-class city, this needs to be a big, a large town center, it can't just be our fifty-seven acres. So, yeah, higher density, uh, being flexible, uh, freeway frontage, I think you pretty much covered that. You know, we're, we're, we're running out of space uh, on freeway frontage as well, so making it as attractive as possible. And keeping in mind that uh, toward the east, you know, Banning, Beaumont, that's the next area where development is gonna happen. We need to be able to capture all that that revenue that's going through our freeways out to Arizona and Nevada and Texas. So, making sure that we capitalize on that. Um, also, just entertainment, the, looking at how the economy is changing. And what sectors, what industries are um, providing the largest and the best sources of revenue, for example. Um, entertainment and commerce, like uh, sports and esports, esports are growing extremely fast. Um, if we can try to work on bringing professional sports teams, maybe a soccer team, we have a lot of soccer out here in this area, a lot of talent as well. Uh, I bring this up a lot, Topgolf, if we could bring facilities like Topgolf or skating rinks, uh, indoor soccer, batting cages. Um, and any new forms of entertainment that are gonna be coming out in the future. Cause it's, you know, it's that experience, and and we see that changing very quickly. So, if we can keep that in mind, um, we're gonna keep growing, population keeps getting bigger. Uh, we're heavily Hispanic, but we are very diverse. So, definitely um, incorporating the different cultures and um, in into the things that we build here. To make sure that we have buy-in from our community, right? Uh, to make sure that we capitalize on the different um, uh, races and ethnicities and beliefs that we have here in this area. Uh, Lake Paris, you know, the Olympics in twenty twenty-eight, that's a huge deal, that's a very big deal. Um, and we need to capitalize on that as well, even though it's not Moreno Valley. Um, I I've brought this up before too, um, the city technically, we own um, uh, the the mountain, right? All the way up to the top of the mountain. Um, and there are multiple areas, I go on hikes a lot, uh, to like Terry Peak. And there's a lot of areas where I think there's potential on the mountainside to build parks or maybe an amphitheater, kinda like in Denver. Not Denver, but right outside of Denver, Colorado, there's a amphitheater built into, and it's just beautiful. Um, so if we could think about those kinds of things. And um, the March Air Reserve Base, the airport, eventually, that's gonna turn into a commercial airport. So, we need to incorporate that into this as well, we need a plan for that. Moreno Valley College, they have their comprehensive master plan, and it's essential, I believe, that if you look on the map. The only thing that's connecting Moreno Valley College to our town center and all the surrounding properties is Grande Vista Drive, up Iris, up to Nason. So, I think it's critical that we incorporate Moreno Valley College and we don't cut them off from what we're gonna build up in that town center area. So, I just wanna make sure I uh, address that.
And any other things to add on as far as visioning?
Uh, yeah, just a couple, a couple more things, so um, let's see here, almo- almost done, I promise. Um, so, employment, you know, uh, I think a big one that we need to um, incorporate as well is um, transportation, right? This ties in with transportation, electric vehicles, that's coming, autonomous vehicles are coming within two, three years, we're gonna start seeing them out on the road. Uh, the infrastructure for that, EV charging stations, uh, batteries, all that kind of uh, technology. We need to make sure we're capitalizing um, on preparing our workforce for those jobs as well with a university, like you said, Mayor. Uh, higher institution, a higher education institution. So, um, other than that, I think those are the major points, I can go on and on and on, you know, I like to ramble. But um, yeah, for the most part, I think that's, that's about it, thank you very much.
And just, we've had an opportunity to meet with you as well individually, so appreciate that, thank you. Alright, uh, Mayor Protem Baca?
Okay, thank you, and now, I just want to concur with my two colleagues, I don't, I'm not gonna uh, reiterate what they've, they've said so far. But my concern, and maybe I didn't raise it when I had the one-to-one with you, is um, our brick and mortar stores that are closing down. So, I would like to add that to the visioning, you know, what's gonna happen with those buildings that are um, eyesores. And, you know, you don't want people breaking into them and making it look worse. And that's all I had, um, since everything else was said.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Baca. Uh, we have Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one thing we gotta look at also here, and for the future, is the aging population here. We have a base here that a lot of the military retirees stay here in Moreno Valley on the, in the region. And we need to concentrate on on healthcare. I know the hospital expanding, the university hospital expanding, and I know Kaiser wants to expand. But we we definitely gotta look at at healthcare in this city. Um, bring more doctors' offices here. And when we do build, like my colleague says here, we we need to start building upward instead of sideways. Because if this SB fifty ever gets approved, it's gonna have a big effect on us here, on our city. And and we gotta stop and realize that also. So, if we, if we get into healthcare here, build it up here in Moreno Valley, we also need to um, bring in some more doctors, offices. And this leads to affordable housing. Like what are the, the speaker said, you know, we don't have eight-hundred-thousand-million-dollar homes here. And a good example is Karma Automotive. A lot of their executives didn't wanna live here because they didn't have big enough homes here. So, if we're going to be a model city, and we need to go ahead and uh, build these homes, they're not gonna be affordable housing. But we still gotta look a- at it as affordable housing for wealthy people, basically. Doctors, executives that wanna live here in Moreno Valley, they don't wanna commute. We gotta look at that also. Truck routes, you know, how many cities, modern cities, have trucks going down through their city's main streets? Not too many. We gotta sta- stop and look at also truck routes, where these warehouses are built, and get them off our main streets. We gotta look at that. And and the last thing is um, the east end of town, which I represent, there's a lot of lot of land out there, I understand. And one day, we're gonna end up building the world, just et cetera, that's gonna come. But the infrastructure, we we definitely, definitely have to look at that also. Definitely. And um, that's about it. And also, on um, just for District Three residents, we have a workshop plan on March eleventh. Will be, uh, let's see here, March eleventh, um, District Three General Plan Workshop. So, I'll get that information out to what location and the time that it's gonna take place in District Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. And um, I really like how you added uh, the part of the senior citizens, I think that's really important in the um, affordable housing, especially for senior citizens too. So, yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, we have a council member, Dr. Thornton?
This is what happens when you go last, everyone's basically said on my notes. Uh, I appreciate Councilmember Marquez bringing up older adults, I was, I was gonna spend my time talking about that. Um, uh, by twenty thirty, the census says that there'll be. So, baby boomers will be the the most significant co- uh, population after twenty thirty. So, we'll have more people over the age of sixty-five than ever before, if people are living longer. So, it's gonna be very important uh, for us to ensure that in our general plan, we're, we're being really intentional about mapping out policies and strategies. Support the older adult population. Um, many of the ideas that come out, I think that younger folks, when they're being surveyed, they're thinking about things that benefit their group. But the reality is that in twenty years, there's gonna be more older people than younger people, especially with um, the birth rate, uh, um, the birth rate continuing to decline. So, we need to, I think there's an opportunity for Moreno Valley to get in front of that and be really intentional in our planning to deal with this demographic. Um, and then also, um, you you all know, I represent the north end of the east side. And so, um, I have to really, uh, you know, I hear a conversation about high-density housing. I'm really um, hesitant about being reactive with Sacramento's um, um, agenda of of encouraging high-density, high-level apartments. I do believe that we need to be um, um, balanced in our housing options. There is room for affordable housing and high-density, but there are still people that want to live in single-story um, residence and have land. And, you know, the area that I represent, I think is the best place to have that type of planning. I do think that we need to have a flexible land use, and, you know, maybe our ones aren't reasonable nowadays. But to say that we're just gonna always um, support high-density apartments in Moreno Valley, I think that we need to be more balanced. And and include how um, different, the different, um, as one of our speakers stated, you know, from from, we want people to be here forty years from now. Nobody wanna live in apartments, but some people do. Um, but I do think that 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 area is something that um, could could have that type of housing with the land. So, I hope we get some support around that area on the east end, north of the freeway. Um, I will go on my social media, and I'm encouraging all my colleagues, we need to um, post about the the www.movav.org twenty forty. And as stated, all of the um, locations, we'll be having workshops. Um, hopefully, we get mass community support for these, so that everyone feels like they've had an opportunity to speak into the general plan. Because it's coming, it's a very exciting time. And um, I think that that at the end of it all, it's gonna be something that I very hopeful will work for all of the residents of Moreno Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, um, and then, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Um, and then A two should have been, that should have been part of A one here, but unless there's someone that needs uh, any specific comments. But um, when we did that round, that's what I was including that one for. Is it Richard, or what's, like I said? Andrew? Thank you, Andrew, appreciate it, thank you. Great job. Um, and I, like we have right here, those are the dates, so please, you know, um, share those dates with people. And um, you know, each one is for a, for a district, so I believe the first one is District One, second, oh, it says it right there, District Two, District Three, and then District Four. Okay? Okay, we'll adjourn the meeting at six forty-five PM.